Ready. And to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning.
Eric, we need you to be more over towards your mic. We can't hear you.
Yeah, when he turns his head, you can't hear him.
There, now I can hear you.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda printed.
I'll second.
I'm trying to get my papers.
Aye.
I read through the minutes. They look good. I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second. Aye. Doesn't appear to be anyone.
No. Morning.
Morning.
Everything's in order, Ben?
What's that?
Everything is in order?
Yeah, they're working on their, uh, their actual flooring contractor right now. When they lock down, because they're gonna have to do flooring, get their, uh, get their insurance information. Well, we'll approve it on our side here. Webster County has approved theirs, I believe. Uh, either tomorrow or next Tuesday. They're doing meetings every other week. Not sure how that lines up. Um, and then, from what I understand, we will share the cost in order.
Okay, I'll make that motion to approve, um, Radar Enterprises LLC on 208th Street, Weaver Township.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The second application to work in the right of way is for Larry Lane and Jensen Drainage. Uh, Larry's got a private tile line that runs down the road ditch, right out in front of his place, that runs to his farm, south of 260th Street. Part of that is like flooded, and it needs to be replaced with, uh, uh, sewer line. And, uh, Gary planned on doing the work. Gary getting, uh, agreement by Larry signing up as far as ownership of that tile and responsibility.
Is, is the tile, the new tile going back in the road ditch?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is on Kansas above the bridge where we fixed, right?
Yes, yeah, it's going from, uh, just south of Larry's driveway, south to, uh, the intersection to 6th.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ben, do you have any other, do you have any other, uh, information, Ben? Uh, right now, we're trying to finish up Home Rock and starting our, uh, little court orders. Both are working on a couple of, uh, uh, court orders for toll work replacements. Almost getting more located called in. Uh, and Hardy's trying to finish at Rock. They're down a couple courts right now.
Okay.
Are you back to full staff and bode?
Yeah, yeah, we have them for...
A week or two?
We have now.
Okay.
Aye.
Anything, anything else for Ben?
Nope.
No.
Nope.
Thanks, Ben.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I see the, there's the, we're in a, and, uh, we have McKinley Bailey, help call McKinley, oh, there he is. McKinley? Um, McKinley, how, what are the order, do we have to be on this, on the 45 time?
As long as McKinley's all right with it, you could go ahead.
Thank you.
McKinley, are you, are you fine with your, uh, presentation a little bit early?
Sure, that'd be fine, no problem.
Okay.
Well, you've done a little bit. Um, so, thanks for having me. Um, I'm not sure, I mean, you, you are, are familiar exactly with what, um, Building Families is to does. It's the early childhood Iowa area for, for Henson, Humboldt, Wright Counties. And we're, um, primarily focused on well-being, more daycare, and most assistance. Um, and so, what that means is, uh, we work with a lot of daycares, uh, in-home childcare providers, childcare centers. Uh, we also have a home visitation program that serves, um, children and their parents, um, ages zero to three. Um, those are, are kind of our primary functions. We also have a child abuse prevention program that serves children, um, ages, uh, children and their parents ages zero to eighteen, and adolescents who are in pregnancy or... Um, what I'm here to talk about today is, uh, childcare situation. Um, talk a little bit about the situation statewide and, but principally what's happening in Humboldt County. Um, and what Building Families is, is doing in response to that. Um, so, uh, statewide, about a third of all childcare centers have closed. And the principal reason behind that is that, um, there, there aren't enough kids, um, to make it financially feasible to stay open. As, you know, parents are, are laid off, or working from home, they pull their children out of childcare. So most childcare providers, centers, and in-home providers are operating, um, at about thirty-five or forty percent of their total capacity. So, anybody who runs business can figure out where you put to if you're making thirty-five or forty percent, um, of what you typically make, it gets hard to stay open. Um, in Humboldt County, uh, this, this data is a couple weeks old, but Childcare Resource and Referral, which is an agency we partnered with in a survey, and, um, figured out that you have, um, one center closed, and that is the center in, um, Gilmore City. And then you also have an additional child development home that's closed. So that's a registered childcare provider. Um, and so, um, thankfully, with the center in Gilmore City closed, the center in, uh, in Cota City, um, Kitty Cat had spaces available, and they were able to absorb most of the families that still needed childcare. What, um, the concern, of course, is, um, that we do still need childcare, um, and perhaps more potentially now than ever, as we think about keeping the essential workforce, um, up to our first responders, hospitals, um, you know, they're at the county, uh, keeping, you know, continuity of government operating and developing. So, um, as a result of this, one of the things that, um, Building Families is doing to try and, um, encourage providers to stay open, is that, um, we're gonna be writing all of the childcare providers that have remained open throughout this crisis, a check for, comes out to about a hundred and forty-five dollars. Um, it's much, but it's, it's what we can come up with. Um, and so what we've done in Hamilton and Wright Counties is to partner with supervisors there. Um, both of those counties had, um, created some, had budgeted some money for bonuses to the new in-home childcare providers, that they really didn't spend much of that money, so they repurposed it. Uh, I had come to you to ask for it because in Humboldt County, uh, prior to this crisis, you, you had enough space, um, and it just wasn't necessarily a need. Um, but now, where you had these closures, that I, I come basically to see if you'd like to join in this bonus, um, or wage statement, or however you wanna call it, um, to childcare providers that have been paid. Um, so, we'll pull up this second spreadsheet here, and I can give you some exact details. The, uh, right now, in Humboldt County, um, there are fourteen in-home childcare providers that are eligible for the bonus. There are seventeen from center employees. And we didn't, what we did with the center employees is we didn't have enough money to pay everyone, maybe worked three or four hours a week, a bonus, so we said, if you've been working twenty hours a week or more, um, you would be eligible, or if you averaged twenty hours a week, about, um, per month. And so, um, there are seventeen center employees there that are eligible. The, um, Building Families, um, will spend in Humboldt County, um, four thousand four hundred seventy-one dollars on these bonuses, and that comes out to around a hundred and forty-five or so dollars, um, a provider. You were to pitch in two thousand dollars, that would raise the bonus to each provider to two hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-five cents. Just for some, some comparisons, um, Wright County, um, is adding three thousand five hundred dollars to this, and Hamilton County is adding twenty-five hundred. So, uh, one way or the other, we will, um, we'll, we'll be writing the bonus check with our partners. But we're just interested to know if you are able, uh, willing, and then also applying on your experience in providing revenues as well, um, to participate in this. What are some of the questions for me, thoughts, concerns?
Did you guys apply for any of the loans through the government?
So, um, we're, we're, we're not the actual childcare providers, uh, we, we aren't, we weren't able to do that. But, uh, most of the centers did apply for the loans, um, in the paperwork for some of the individual in-home childcare providers, because many of them applied, just because it's the paperwork wording was a little bit overpriced. Other thing that's a little bit concerning on that note is that most of these registered childcare providers are now eligible for unemployment, whereas they previously weren't. Um, and, you know, they can make the unemployment rate plus six hundred dollars, which is probably more than they need. You know, um, and there's far less paperwork involved. Center's definitely off to apply for it.
Well, two of the boards that I serve on with UMO and, um, CFR, both applied for some of that money, and both were rewarded highly for their paperwork that they did. And I'm, I'm, to be honest, I'm just a little upset that I thought that money was going to businesses and stuff like that, that not non-for-profit agencies, that I still don't understand all the rules that, but... That's why I was kinda curious if you guys had applied, because they seem to have come out really well on it.
Yeah, and I, and I don't know exactly what their funding mechanisms look like, but we're, almost all of our funds are appropriated by the state legislature, and they haven't really cut any of our funding yet. It would be hard for me to justify, uh, laws to be able to show up loss revenue. You know, because until the legislature comes to cut us, and I imagine they will next year, I imagine just about everybody's gonna be getting cut. At that point in time, perhaps, I can show some sort of laws, but right now, maybe through legislature are coming in and scheduled. So, we didn't apply for it, although it was, it was kind of interesting that they, they did open up to the unproportions as well.
McKinley, is this a, this is Sandy, is this a one-time, um, bonus to the employees?
That's right, and so, it's a one-time bonus to the employees and to the sole providers.
And you said if Humboldt County brought in, I could question you, did you say two, it'd make it two hundred and eight dollars?
Yep, with, with two thousand dollars, now from Humboldt County, it would go up to two hundred and eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
But as far as, are all the other, um, providers, are, are they still at capacity in Humboldt County? Do you know that, I know Gilmore City closed because they're associated with the school, that's why they closed.
Oh, so they closed.
So they closed, but that's because they're associated with the school, where our, the Kitty Cat is not, even though it's...
Attached.
It's at the school building, it's not really... So, do you know how many of the Humboldt County are taking less kids or have less kids? Is it about thirty-five percent?
So, I, I don't have, um, I have a little bit of data on that. It's not entirely conclusive, um, but here, let me give you an idea. Um, it's like one... Yeah, didn't get a whole lot of responses here to this survey from Humboldt County. But I can see here, it's just one of the providers posted open spaces. But what, um, what we know is that a, a lot of the providers are, people like have space right now, because my families are, um, not sending their kids in, right? Because mom died or was from home, or laid off, or, or, you know, or weird situations that we find ourselves in right now. So, they have kind of, they're in sort of a weird situation. Do I take somebody else in, even though I'm expecting these other kids to come back at some point in time? Um, do I take someone in temporarily, like an essential worker, and then say, whenever they're being used, we'll come back, or not? Or do we just say, for the safety of the kids that we have in here right now, we don't wanna fix these kids in with, with new kids, um, who they haven't been exposed to? And they, we're getting different answers, different providers are settling on any one of those, those three answers essentially. So it, it's hard to say exactly which one of those categories your childcare providers are landing on. But without a doubt, we know that almost all of them are operating under capacity. It's just the data right now, like that statewide number is about thirty-five, forty percent.
Peggy, do we have an extra two thousand just laying around in the budget?
Little by little, those little numbers are starting to go down.
I know.
But it, it's not a huge amount where you're gonna have to amend the budget for or anything. It's probably something we could find somewhere if you wanted to do that.
Well, I guess my, I don't have a problem doing it, other than the fact that if they don't fill out their surveys and...
Right.
Give it to McKinley, then it's awful hard for me to say, well, who are we giving it to?
If you're not willing to put in the effort to even do the survey or the paperwork...
Yeah, that's my opinion, if you aren't gonna do it.
I was thinking too.
Okay, just, uh, let me tell you here, um, there are responded to the survey, which, it wasn't my survey. It was, this came from Childcare Resource and Referral. You had, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. You had seven providers, and one of them, the two that were closed, so eight, nine respond. Um, you just had the one respond about vacancies.
Oh.
And, and you didn't, as I sort of say, you know, that doesn't, what I guess what I was trying to say, that doesn't necessarily correspond to them being at capacity, because they all made these different decisions about, well, we're not taking on any more kitty cats, for the sort of reasons that I highlighted there. We do have a solid list of, of providers, um, we, we've contacted Childcare Resource and Referral, to ensure that they are open, so we've been in touch with all of the providers on the list. Is, is all answered the question about vacancies in a way that we would have liked.
Well, if we had that, that's over half a pers, you know, over fifty percent, probably what, sixty-five percent responded. Do we need to make a motion and, uh...
Do you think all of them are just the ones that responded? I think you almost need to do it tomorrow.
Yeah, you can't, you, I mean, I think it'd be hard to...
Yeah.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve two thousand to go to, uh, direct, uh, Building Families.
I'll second your motions, Andy. Um, sometimes I think we just throw money at everything. But, these people are staying open so the other people can go to work, so they can make money and keep things running. I mean, we've done things for other people.
Right.
I can understand why they're doing it.
Yeah, that's a, thanks, I agree.
Peggy, are we okay with, uh, those two motions in a second on that?
We do have a motion and a second, yes.
Okay. Uh, the reason I asked, is it, it was just a discussion and update, but is it already, have we moved forward with the, with this?
We can move it to next week and put it on the agenda. That works for him.
Either way.
Why, babe, I mean, I received, asked for the vote on that. I just checked with Peggy on the board call.
Yes, since you're asking, the discussion was there, I think you have the ability to make the motion.
Okay, oh, wait on the first and a second, then on the motion for two thousand dollars, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close.
Not very enthusiastic, of course.
Thank you.
I know, I know exactly how you feel.
Watch for reprotections from others.
Aye.
Anything, uh, explanation? Um, do you have anything else to add, Chris?
Nope, no, but, uh, thank you very much. We'll, we'll make sure that the childcare providers, um, know that you collaborated with us with the checks go out, and, um, if I have any other pressing information or we hear of some more closures, I will, um, make sure to let you all know.
I would also add to your, um, when you interact with them, that we appreciate when they respond to your guys' surveys, so that we know...
Yeah.
What's going on, as opposed to, we're hoping? That's my opinion.
That's a good point, Bruce.
Will do.
Alright, well, thank you, McKinley. Moving down the list here, uh, just, uh, I'll try to chairman to sign it, uh, Secure Benefits System document for the cafeteria, it's planned to change.
You remember I discussed with you a while back about allowing over-the-counter items to be ineligible reimbursement? And the board said, yeah, go ahead and do that. This was something that Secure Benefits told us that we could do, it was an elective. So now they have sent the paperwork for that, and the paperwork needs to be signed.
I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, voting in leave.
Nothing to add, is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, I will sign that. The, uh, directed start rate of fourteen eighty-five for Elizabeth Swanson.
Was it last week at fifteen something?
Yeah, I must have had the wrong number.
Last week, we had it on the agenda as a certified, and she was not a certified, um, person, so her rate is fourteen eighty-five.
I would make that motion to, for that correction, of fourteen eighty-five.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, move to the correct rate. Uh, moving along, uh, kind of a note there, uh, that known as far as I'm concerned, but understandable, that says accept resignation of the courthouse custodian, dated August twenty-first this year.
And that note came from Dave Rundo. He's made his decision to retire from his position as custodian at the Humboldt County courthouse. I have set August twenty-first as my termination date. He's looking forward to spending more time with family and friends, and he says it's been a pleasure to have worked here for twenty-one years.
I was gonna ask, how many years? It's been twenty-one years.
So just that he's getting a new ba, or grand baby, he thinks he's gonna retire?
Yeah.
Uh...
He has done, yeah.
Yes, I've always been impressed as how shiny the courthouse was.
I'll make that motion with regret.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Looks like, uh, Peggy, they reviewed a discussion of the cost pass, like we, on corporate areas, you know, maybe give something to them.
You bet, I have all the cities reviewing their language also. Um, this was passed in two thousand and eleven. It expires June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one. We cannot put the language on the ballot for November. Um, the legislature won't allow us to do that. So we have to have a special election in Au, uh, September. So we need to get our language together. So this is what our language currently says. Um, did I put one of these in with your package? Um, we currently say zero percent for property tax relief, um, seventy percent for secondary road projects, and thirty percent for Humboldt County community betterment projects approved yearly by the Board of Supervisors. You don't have to make a decision today, but you need to be thinking about this, 'cause I'm gonna keep bringing it up until we get our language together. Um, we can't officially schedule an election until at least fifty percent of the population of the county, of the jurisdictions, um, of the population of the county file their public measure, their approval of this. So, I already have City of Humboldt, I have City of Livermore, but that's not enough to kick it over. The county will do that if we had our language ready. Otherwise, they have to wait for all the other little cities to, to file and try to get that fifty percent. So if you don't do it today, that's fine, but we need to...
We'd like to have it done, huh?
Need to at least know if this language is gonna change.
Are you good with the way this is worded now?
Um, is Ben still on? No, he's not. It might be good to check with Ben and see if he's comfortable with that.
He talked about coming over here.
70% of secondary roads.
Yep. He uses that for a lot of their special projects.
I mean, that's the biggest chunky, yeah!
That's what it's been for several years.
Yes, yeah.
As many as long as I can remember.
And I think that's helped, helped them a lot. But if he feels like it's too much, you could shift that to somewhere else or-
Can we ever shift it, or once it's set this way, this is the way it's set?
He's allowed it. I mean, we could do it if he agrees.
If he agrees.
Yeah.
Yeah, if he'd say, oh, I don't need that much money, he can take 65% or something.
Well, you, you don't have to have him agree. I mean, you guys said the language.
Yeah, no, but I mean, once, once the language is set-
Oh, yeah.
We, you know, if he says, I don't need that much, we don't have to give him the full 70. But if he requests it, we have-
Oh, yes, you do. Once it's set.
Oh, we have to give it, oh, we have to get it even if he doesn't want it?
Yes.
Oh, I thought he had that opportunity to-
Nope.
Okay.
Now, I thought it was, is it set in stone, or if it's a-
It can be changed. We'd have to have another special election to choose the use language on it.
Okay.
So once it's set, it stays for the 10 years unless we decide to-
Okay, I thought it was like a-
Change it in there.
I just thought that was what he was allowed to have and-
We can do that on some of the road use tax money, but we can't do that on local option. It just automatically goes to him.
Okay.
Well, how about if we check with Ben, then see if he's good with that, and then-
Get it on next week.
Get it on next week's agenda, and that way we can- Talk about it then.
At least you have it in front of you and you know what the wording is, and we can check with Ben and go forward.
Yeah, perfect.
All of that's agreeable to everybody, to keep bringing it back up next week?
I know a lot of people, I will count it, rely on that, um, that chance.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Eric, I didn't hear what you said. What was that?
Peggy?
Yes.
Oh, I mean, basically, we're just talking about the percentages listed before, Jerry, get it?
Yeah, that's correct.
Other than that, other than that, there's only a language change.
Unless you decide you wanna give the guy in Timbuktu 20,000 dollars for funding, or 10% or 5% or whatever. That's entirely up to you guys. The language comes from you.
Well, we haven't had any requests for that Timbuktu guy. He hasn't knocked on the door yet.
I know, I know.
You're right, we might.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't know whether anything going on with, I'm sure it's gonna go down.
Think we're gonna check with Ben, and then we'll put it on for next week.
I had no official meetings this week.
I didn't have any meetings, but I had several phone calls that I got to partake in. Um, a person from Illinois is still insisted on a, our gate operation out at the dams. So, I visited with Todd. Todd gave me a letter, a name of a gentleman that he deals with at the DNR. Name is Jonathan Garten. So, I finally got ahold of him on Friday, and we visited for 15, 20 minutes. And he was, uh, very well informed with Mike Boston from Illinois, because he said he's dealt with him several times too. And Jonathan is also, um, basically happy with the way that the dams are being operated. And those operations, we have the permit to have them, and they're operated according to the way they want them operated. And Dave has been doing that, just like he's instructed to do. But Mike still believes that, um, they're causing some of the land up there to be wetter than- And I said, well, we may need the water now, because now we got the rain turned off, and it hasn't got any, so you might want that. But I told him that I would visit with you guys, um, see what our, the rest of the board's opinion was. But I said, in my opinion, um, as long as the state tells us that we're doing it by the way they want it done, and Todd has verification that that's the way he's doing it, then, other than taking them out, that's basically all. So, I guess I'm throwing that at you. I told him I would call him back this afternoon after we'd had our meeting this morning, and see what your guys' response was, um. What do you think?
I don't think there's a whole lot we can do about it. I mean, we're following their guidelines. He tells us what to do, and we do it.
You really have the money to, to-
Remove it.
Bring it off, huh?
Well, Jonathan said, if you, if you decide someday that you wanna remove the dams, there's grant money would be available. But, it's just the, the stipulation of you gotta go through all the, bring them all the-
But if you did that, would the, that wouldn't help the silt problem that there is along the river, right?
No, not really. Make it worse.
So then, really what, what would be the purpose of doing it if it isn't gonna help the silt problem? Because that's the big issue, isn't it? Because there's so much silt there, the water isn't flowing like it should.
Well, I think a lot of it is, I think the, the silt makes, when you do have a flood, it makes the flood a little worse.
It goes wider.
Goes wider, the river does.
Oh, okay.
Because the, because it used to be, so when you get excess water. I really think the issue's been, it's just been so dang wet the last few years, that we've had bragade issue like we've seen up there, because the outlet was underwater for two years. And now that the water table's going down, I think we'll, we won't have these problems.
Well, that's what I told Mike when I visited with him. I said, you know, we might end up wishing that we could have some of that moisture, because it's kind of turned off and we haven't had, and most of the crops are in, so- I said, I guess I'm, I'm just, uh, curious to, I'll throw it out to the rest of the board, and, and I know that, you know, Todd worries about, because he's doing just what the DNR instructs him to do, and how when they want it raised and lowered, and so he's doing what he's told, so he's kind of the-
And they really don't adjust them that often.
No. So, I guess I would look for rec, what, if I just tell them we're gonna continue to operate it the way Jonathan and the DNR, um, that's-
That's my suggestion.
Yeah.
I would agree with that.
Yeah. Are you good at that, Eric?
I, I concur. I was just waiting for anybody else that's gotten it. Plus, I don't know if we have the final say on that anyway. So, yeah, I believe it's gonna be, they handled that statement for, like everybody mentioned, Todd and the conservation division run up the, uh, gates. And I believe we're just gonna have to continue on with that.
Right. The only other thing I have is talking with Becky upstairs in Nunnville. They dumped the, shagged the drag the last few weeks. Last week they didn't have, uh, food pantry my, uh, donation. But two weeks before, and then last, two weeks ago, I guess they didn't. Last week they did. So, every time they do it, they almost get to pick up loads of stuff.
Oh, wow.
Well, we are like bulging at the seams out there, because we aren't getting as many people coming through, because food stamps and stuff have been increased. So, I visited with Dave, what was it, Friday or Saturday we talked?
Saturday, I mean, Saturday.
Um, Becky's looking for a way to get these smaller towns around us, that, you know, the Renwick's, the Hardee's, the Thor's, whoever. If there are people in need, and I mentioned it at church yesterday to have pastor make an announcement, that if people are in need, we have food. We have stuff that we gotta get rid of, that, you know, how do we do this? Um, I told him, all these small towns need to make sure, I mean, we're not a delivery service, but we can try to figure out, Becky said they could just put some bags together and take them, say, to the Renwick Library, or take them to the Renwick, whatever. Um, but we just aren't gonna drive around town like the ice cream truck, you know, ringing a bell here. But we need to get rid of this stuff, so, uh, Jonathan, I'm, and hopefully you guys can put a bleep on the, the radio to, to help. Any, I know what, people have a hard time wanting to say, I could use some food, but we, we gotta get rid of the food that we have, or it's just gonna spoil, so, um, that's where I would deal with that.
Dave, how about some of your veterans?
Uh, well, I had the team this morning, but I don't think they got any.
That was the reason I called him. I thought, well, maybe some of the veterans we could try to reach out to, but they're probably the group that's the proudest that wouldn't, won't come forward. So, anyway, that's-
It's a good problem to have.
It is, and we applaud the people that have done this on Friday night, and then they back up to the door on Saturday morning to pick up loads of stuff, and into a full building, and then new co-op delivered 50 or 60 pork loins, and, and they got, so- And I think the truck comes in the next, this week, so-
Third paint.
Yeah.
Food truck comes the third paint, I got that.
Well, maybe they can share it with some food pantries that are-
I hope so.
More empty, huh?
Yeah.
Well, that'd be an option too.
That's a good idea.
Make a call to some of these bigger communities where there is more, where they're having more of the layoffs and things, like, you know, Blackhawk County, Polk County.
Yeah, that's a very good, good idea too.
Well, I guess, I'm hoping that we get some people to step forward that will help us here, that'll take it. And, because I told Becky that I would be willing to deliver to some of these towns if, if, uh, we have a group of people that need it, so-
I can do that too, if you need help with that too.
That's it?
That's it, okay. Um, the 29th, I had a White House COVID 19 conference call, and it was with, I can't remember the guy, Deputy Director of FEMA. And evidently, there's so much money going out with these care things. People are trying to double dip for the same thing.
Oh, yeah.
The big thing is that he wants us to, to come to our counties with, is to make sure and be very careful how you're, what money you're using for, um, the COVID issues that you can get through FEMA, that you're not trying to get that through another entity. So that later, because they, they, they said they're going to audit all of these requests, and that if the money was double used, then the counties will have to pay it back.
They'll want it back, yeah.
Yep. So we just need to be very careful how we're putting all that. I know you're really good at Peggy, so I'm not, you know, I'm just saying, it's just a thing to think about, because it could be, by the time this all gets done, it could be years before they start auditing. It could be three or four years in the future. It's kinda like the IRS. And they audit, yeah. They will come. So it'll just be down the road, it might be. So we just need to be careful of that. Um, then the other thing I had that day, the 29th, was Regis 5 for Iowa Workforce Development. We had a Zoom meeting. Um, we're still trying to get all, we've got our bylaws done, we got our 20AD done. Um, we just gotta keep our, um, workforce board together. And, and, because we have to have 17 on that board for us to be considered a region. And, um, and I understand there's been so much upheaval with Iowa workforce right now. A lot of people are not really interested in, in going again. So if there is a business, we need business people that can make managerial decisions. If there's somebody interested that would be willing to serve on that Iowa Workforce Board, we would greatly appreciate it. The more people we can get in Humboldt County to be, um, represented, it's just only gonna help us.
It helps our voice.
It does. It helps our voice, it helps us to really, because we're gonna, you know, I've, I've said this for a year now, that unemployment is not gonna last at 2%. So, we've gotta be looking at, we've got a lot of manufacturers in the area. We need to have them represented. So that's my push, um, to try to get, um, some more businesses involved with that, because it's really only gonna help. Um, and then the next thing was on Friday, uh, 10 o'clock, um, there was an ISAC COVID call, and, um, Director Garcia was on that, and that was, um, interesting. Um, so, it was, it was, it was good. I mean, we're getting good information, it's just, there's just so many things in, in other communities, not so much in our area, that is, like, the Polk County, the Blackhawk, things like that, that are, that are going on that it pertains more to. Then there was also a, then we also had, um, on that day at noon, we had a Iowa Workforce Development CEO webinar for all of the, for the statewide, for this new, because they want us all to develop into new regions. They want us to combine with the other ones. The one, if we do combine with anybody, probably three and four, which is Northwest Iowa. And, um, but they, they're getting their paperwork together too. But the state keeps changing how they want us to do things. Every time we have to be competing-
Get far away through it, and then they change their stuff.
Yeah. And, and they did that again this time. They, we were supposed to be ready and done by May 15th, so we worked our pines off to get that done. Well, now, they've changed-
Just, do you think we changed the date?
Yeah, they did. They changed it to September now, but they also added some extra hoops. So, we're just like, ah! Um, and then at 2 o'clock, there was the, another NACO conference call, and that was just with a bunch of different, it was mostly with the NACO people, so it was okay. Nothing, nothing new.
Do you leave your phone charging all day long?
Thankfully, this thing has a good battery. But I do charge it every night. That's it. That's all I got.
That's it.
Uh, Tuesday, I had a VA meeting. Uh, Thursday, I was up here for the courthouse closing. Looked up to the county nurse. Do you wanna give a report on that, Peggy?
Sure will.
I'll just, yeah, what I mean. But, uh, we had a good meeting there, and I had a military funeral Thursday also. And again, we separated, and only one guy, I went up as the veteran and paid my respects and presented the flag. It was like that, uh, dude box.
I was wondering, means obviously you do have the recording.
No, no throwing on guns or anything like that. It's just present the flag, because you can't have so many people in the cemetery.
Yeah. Seems so.
Yeah, especially in white open spaces.
Yeah.
All right, I didn't have any official extra trinkets of the past week.
Okay.
Looking forward to what Dave mentioned, uh, information, uh, with the public health, and I don't know, DMA was, kind of, well, on that?
Yes, they were. Um, could I go over just a quick, couple of quick things before we get into that? Solutions is wanting to upgrade your laptops. Um, they said they can either be brought in, or they can contact you individually and do that. Which way would you rather have them do that? I'm thinking maybe it's easier to do them at home, but maybe it's easier for you to bring them in.
Well, if they don't mind me erasing everything that's on, and if I do.
It's just an update, and it needs to be done.
Mine keeps, light keeps coming on, saying that there's a virus or something that needs to be-
Oh.
Uh, and it might be somebody trying to sell me something too.
Could be.
So, I'm sure my wife will help.
You bet she is. Yeah?
Okay.
Yep, she'll do it.
Okay?
Let me see, my daughter's helping.
If they send us, uh, love to, to do it, I guess.
Well, your, your machines are currently set up so they can VPN into them, if you allow them to. You have to officially give them permission. And they'll walk you through the steps, so.
Well, you better walk slow.
Yeah. They taught me a lot of stuff, and they, they're doing it.
All right, Peggy, we're leaning on you there.
Um, you did get reports from both the reporter and the treasurer on how they're doing in their offices. Um, things seem to be going pretty well. As far as the auditor's office, I guess I didn't put it in writing. Um, we spent last week getting ready for elections. We had a lot of stuff to get ready. You'll notice today, when you go outside, that we have four designated parking spots. We have our vote here signs out by the entrances into the courthouse. Um, when people come in, they're gonna- Um, when people come in, they're gonna call up here first to our office. We're gonna get some information from them so we can verify their voter registration. We'll bring their ballot out to their car. They can vote in the privacy and comfort of their own vehicle. And then they'll be able to put their ballot in a ballot box. We have a portable ballot box we'll take out with us. So, um, we have that process all set up. Um, we're getting our notices ready to put in the newspaper as far as absentee voting and voter registration. I've already contacted the newspaper about, uh, cost. If we decide we want to publish the voter registration form or the absentee ballot form in the reminder. Um, so I have those ready to go if I want to use that. Um, I'm getting some information together for the radio station. Donovan's been very good about to, um, let me know ahead of time what type of information he would like to have. I'll be visiting with him this afternoon and get that information out to the public. And hopefully we'll be in pretty good shape. We've dealt with quite a few absentee requests last week. We appreciate those people who have already done that. And when I picked up Saturday's mail, we had two hundred and forty-seven more.
Oh, wow.
So, they're starting to come in. So, we really do appreciate that everybody is taking their safety in concern, the safety of the poll workers, uh, the safety of our office, um, everybody involved in voting at home or voting in the comfort of your car so that you don't have to expose anybody or we don't have to expose anybody. It, it's just a, a win-win situation all the way around. So, we're strongly encouraging anybody that would like to vote. Um, the in-person absentee opened up today. Uh, we're having you vote in your car rather than come in the courthouse because the courthouse is still closed. But we will come and visit with you. We will give you the opportunity to exercise your rights. We're not, uh, putting any strings on it or making it any more difficult than it has been in the past. We still have to verify information to be able to give you a ballot. So, hopefully everything will go just fine. Um, we did have a call from the, uh, if you remember right, the family of Jerry Dietrich who used to be the county auditor had ordered a bench to be put out front, uh, in memory of Jerry. And that bench is, uh, in the process of being assembled and brought here. Uh, the gentleman who's bringing it here said he happened to be up this way and he took a look at the bench out front, the one that's from Barb. And he said that there's a leg on the bench that is bad and then we want to fix the leg while he was here. He wouldn't take, have to take the bench with him. He can fix it while he was here. And so, we acquired on the cost and he said it'd be eighty-eight dollars and fifty cents. So, I'm assuming that's okay to...
Before, before, Sunday.
I, I told him I'd check with you guys first.
A lot of people use that bench.
Yeah, a lot of people do use the bench. Okay, as far as my report on EMA and the public health. Um, and I did visit with, um, we had a staff departmental meeting, uh, the day after. So, first off with EMA, um, they said that, we asked them if we could require temperatures to be taken before allowing people in. And they said we would need staff to man that. And it's still hard to find a thermometer. Thermometers are very hard to come by. So, we decided that's probably not a very good idea at this point because we really don't have anybody who could spend the whole day standing at the door. Uh, can we require people coming into the courthouse to wear a face covering? Um, we can ask them, but we can't require them to wear a face covering unless the board passes a policy that says everybody coming into the courthouse has to have a face covering. We asked if we could require employees to wear masks. Um, you can, but again, you have to have a policy in effect and you have to educate all the staff as to when and why they're wearing the face covering. Um, should we continue to ask the three house questions? If we do not do, or if we do appointments, um, later on in the month? And we would need a policy on that if we were gonna do that also. Excuse me, my voice is real fuzzy right now. I gotta take a drink. So, if we were gonna explore any of those other possibilities, we would have to have the policies in place. They stressed, um, we need to make sure we wash our counters, doorknobs really frequently if people are in the building. Um, as far as a timeline for when we should open, um, they said the governor never did shut down county business, which is true. And so, she will not ever be issuing something to reopen county business. So, it's kind of up to us. So, after we were done, um, I sent an email out to, um, first floor department heads and just said, "Let's sit down. Let's talk this over. Let's talk about a date." So, we had the treasurer, the recorder, the assessor and myself. Um, all of my staff is back this week because of in-person voting and all the absentees were receiving. We need the staff back. Um, but we're not doing official in the county or in the courthouse voting. The other offices said they're ready to have their staffs come back May eleventh. So, the recorder, the assessor and the treasurer will be bringing their staffs back on May eleventh. So, we will let the rest of the offices in the courthouse know that also because some of them are still doing the, um, continuity of operations and splitting staff. Uh, we still want to keep the doors shut and do appointments only if we need to. We're not ready to open doors yet. Um, we've been watching the numbers, watched the numbers over the weekend. They're still going up. They may not be in our community, but that doesn't mean they won't be in our community at some time. We're doing something right out there because our numbers are low. Let's keep doing something right. Dave had suggested maybe opening the day after Memorial Day on the twenty-sixth. That's a possibility. Um, we'll just have to watch and see how things go. If those numbers don't come down and if things don't start to level out, I don't think we'll even be comfortable opening then, but we'll see how it goes. But we're gonna keep you guys involved, um, keep everybody involved as far as that goes as to how we're progressing. We did find some spray bottles. So, we have some, um, hand sanitizer downstairs that's more a liquidy kind of... So, we can put spray bottles out and around when we do open up and have people spray their hands. At least make sure that they're, you know, using hand sanitizer when they come into the courthouse. So, um, we've got some things on hand that we can use. I was able to get some, uh, personal protective equipment from the public health nurses at EMA. I appreciate their help on that for my election workers. We got some masks, uh, we got some gloves, uh, we got some more disinfectant or hand sanitizer disinfectant. And, uh, that's all in our election room. We're saving that for elections. So, uh, other than needing some handset, or some sanitizing wipes, I can't find those anywhere. I know some people have found them occasionally when they've gone to the store. So, I did turn in a request to Kerry at EMA and asked him maybe if he could find maybe four containers for me because when we go to live voting on June second out at the polls, we need to be able to wipe that, uh, place down, not just in the morning when we're ready to go, but we need to wipe it intermittently throughout the day. Uh, same thing up in Livermore. They're gonna have to keep things cleaned down all the time.
You almost need to wipe after every, if somebody's sitting down, they're putting their hands on the counter, you're gonna need to wipe it after every time you have somebody there.
Exactly. Exactly. That's why we like to drive up in the car so...
Yeah, and the mail, mail in absentee is, save a ton of work for everyone.
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah. Because they will have to sterilize. We've got pins at the polling places and we have pins here that we are going to have people use to vote and we don't want them back. We can't spend all of our time sanitizing a pin and then passing it on to the next one and sanitizing a pin and passing it. They're gonna be busy enough. So, we'll give you a pin. You vote it. You take the pin with you or you drop it in the garbage that's gonna be right by the, uh, ballot box. So, in any case, we don't want that pin back. Those are some of the things that we've done. Um, comments or suggestions from you guys?
Sounds like you've been busy with your plants.
We have been busy, yes.
And the numbers will depend. I mean, she's opening up the state a little bit more. It depends upon, I mean, I think it's good to wait a couple of weeks.
I think so.
It's gonna take two weeks to at least know after...
Yeah, how this opening up is gonna affect things.
Exactly. And they were talking on the one, I can't remember what station it was. They were worried about people with, like, counties that, uh, twenty-two counties that are still closed up. Those people are gonna go out to counties...
That are closed.
That are closed. And so, you're gonna have cross, cross spread possibly that way. But we, we're far enough away from all of them, hopefully, and won't...
I think that, uh, if, if we wait, let's wait till after Memorial Day. Because if things open back at the fifteenth, some of this stuff is, she's opened up now as of the first. Uh, I went through Oliver Park yesterday, or not Oliver, uh, Legends. And there was more people than I have ever seen down there. That's a beautiful drive down through that.
Yeah.
And, uh, so we was out for a drive just checking out camping spots and campgrounds and stuff. And there was more people in there and the game warden was going through, breaking the parties up and telling them to separate and all that stuff. And he had his hands full because when we come in, he was down towards the end. So, he'd already been down through and there were still people congregated. There must have been fifty people in each one of the creek crossings. Kids sitting there, you know? And they got bad down in, uh, Dallas and Polk County. That's not that far from there. It was just boom there, but there, there was too many people out. So, I think this thing's gonna bust open again. I think we're gonna have problems. So, I would suggest getting maps and, uh, masks and carrying them. But I don't think we need to start opening the courthouse till after Memorial Day.
I mean, we're getting along fine.
Right.
The way we are.
Any appointments or...
I've been hurt a lot at the place.
Well, what I heard was somebody was trying to get a, uh, sixteen-year-old, you know? We can all remember back to when we...
You lost that driver's license. You want it now.
I wanted it the night before so that I could go drive. And, and that person said, "Well, the..." They were just told, they couldn't get it until later, so they've been driving. I said, "I couldn't step away from that because I'm not gonna be on that, saying that." I can understand that, so...
Yeah, I can too.
I haven't had anybody complain.
I've had two or three, but it was, is what it is, so...
We need to visit when we're done.
That's all I have, Eric.
Okay.
I'm, what you're begging, I'm all for. Let's keep it closed somewhat and we'll just continue to operate.
Yep.
I agree.
I think everyone's going off to another good point because, yeah, it's really a kind of waiting and hopefully it's, uh, the final, the death of the problem.
Right.
Generally, it's a balance that's, uh, it's, it's gonna be a little bit different. Does, uh, anyone else have anything else?
We need...
No.
Just for...
I think we're good.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.